Good evening. I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for May the 1st, 2025, beginning at 7:09 PM. Vice President Sarah McMorrow will be joining us via virtually Zoom tonight. President Chapa is out of town for work, so you are stuck with me cheering tonight's meeting. You get your third string. Thank you all for joining us. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone to come. Thank you for participating in our public board meetings and public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we do have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted, and anyone who disrupts or speaks when others are speaking will be asked to leave or will be escorted out by security. We welcome your civic input, but we insist that you remain respectful and civil, just like we will be. Thank you for your cooperation. Please join Wood Elementary student Haley Brazil. Brazil or Bresel?
Brazil.
Brazil, in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Haley?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may now be seated. If you would please join us for a moment of silence. That's the most silence I think we've heard all day. To learn a little bit more about the student leading us in tonight's pledge and about Haley, we're going to turn it over to our Executive Director of Engagement, Equity, and Access, Erin Peralas.
Thank you, Secretary Richardson. I'm so excited to say thank you to Haley Brazil. As we heard, she's a sixth grader at Wood Elementary. She's here with her mom Rebecca and dad Corey. Thank you so much for making sure she could get here on time. She did such a wonderful job. Now, she is a great leader. We got to experience some of that leadership just a minute ago, but she's a great leader on campus. And so, her favorite subject is math. In fact, she takes advanced mathematics classes. So, we're going to talk a little bit later because I might need some help with my multiplication. All right? And she's a dancer. She loves to dance. I asked her, well, what kind of dance? She said all of it. She loves all music and all dancing, and she actually plays the cello in the orchestra. So, after all that movement and burning all those calories, she likes to eat a pretty good steak. Me too. All right? But you know what? You did a fantastic job today. Thank you to mom and dad for helping you be here, but thank you for leading us in the pledges today. You did a fantastic job. We have a little something for you at recess that we talked about. Okay?
The second part of our agenda tonight is our recognitions. After our recognitions for this evening, we are going to take a short recess, and that way you can take pictures, you can join us outside with the backdrop, and you can be able to celebrate and cheer each other on. Recognition Item A today is our performance from Ashworth Elementary. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Peralas to tell us a little bit more.
All right, Secretary Richardson, we have some wonderful Ashworth musicians here today, and they're giving us a very unique presentation. It is a pre-recorded video of a wonderful event that took place earlier this week, and I believe we're going to cue that up and play that, and I'm going to share some information about their activity while we're watching the video.
May Day is one of the oldest spring festivals. It dates back to the 17th century, when communities celebrated the season's arrival with hopes of sunshine and blooming flowers. Since Ashworth Elementary opened in 1996, the Maypole Dance has been a cherished tradition. Dr. Judith Carrier, former president of Tarrant County College, helped launch the tradition by inviting Ashworth students through music teacher Ms. Barbara Keaton to perform at TCC. Now in its 29th year, the partnership between Ashworth and TCC continues to thrive. Each spring, Ms. Boyd, Ashworth music teacher, who's here with us, with the support of her principal Stacy Maddox, who's also here with us, teaches the Maypole and folk dances to second, third, and fourth graders, with 12 students from each grade selected to perform at TCC. The event includes the crowning of a May Queen, alternating between Ashworth and TCC staff. This year's honoree is Ashworth's own family engagement liaison, Ms. Rayborn Sprayberry, who's also here with us this evening. Ashworth's May Day celebration is a joyful tradition that honors community, creativity, and the spirit of spring. I think we have a few more moments to enjoy the video. Led by music teacher Ms. Boyd, who's with us, and they actually brought the maypole. It's out in the foyer if you want to take a look at it a little bit later. Thank you, Ashworth.
Thank you, Ashworth Mustang dancers. We are so lucky to have you guys here, and if you will stick around in just a moment, we would love to take pictures with you and see your maypole outside. Would that be okay? Wonderful. If you guys would like to take a seat, we will be able to adjourn in just a minute to take a break with you. Our next item, Item B, is our Student of the Month. To introduce them, we are going to go back to Mr. Peralas again.
All right. We enjoy celebrating great students, and we have so many wonderful students in Arlington ISD, and we are excited to celebrate the Student of the Month from Venture High School. Presenting our Student of the Month is Principal Greg Meeks, and we are going to meet Rugi Ninga.
That was a pretty good cheer there. So, Secretary Richardson, Dr. Smith, a great board that we have here in our upper admin. We're super proud this evening. Many of you know, but this is one of our achieving days for us at Venture because it allows us to spotlight our students. Rugi came to us last year, and a newcomer, and she decided to continue to excel, come over to our Venture side, and through that Rugi has three endorsements and many other things I will not share, she'll share with you, has three languages and so many other things, and I think she's going to learn a fourth. I won't spill the beans, but I think her future goals in this, she'll have to learn Latin. So, anyway, Rugi, we're super proud of you. You represent us well, so if you would, just give the board a few words there.
Good evening, everyone. Secretary Richardson, board members, and Dr. Smith, thank you for inviting me to speak with you tonight. My name is Rugi Ninga, and I'm from Senegal. First, I wanted to say thank you to the Venture staff for choosing me as the Student of the Month. I would also like to recognize my family for attending tonight, my mom, sisters, and brothers.
Yes, ma'am.
When the counselors called me in, I thought I was in trouble. I was like, what did I do? So, when they told me I was chosen as Student of the Month, I was shocked, but also really happy. It truly means a lot to me. When I arrived in the U.S. in March 2024, I didn't speak any English. I enrolled at Newcomer Center, and I was nervous every single day. If someone asked me a question, I just smiled or said yes to everything, even when I didn't understand. But over time, my teachers helped me feel more confident. They were patient, kind, and always pushed me to keep going. Because of them, I'm not afraid to speak up anymore. After some time, I transferred to Venture. At first, I felt a little out of place, but everyone here was welcoming, the teacher truly cared, they check in, take their time to help, and they listened. Because of them, I have grown, not just as a student, but as a person. I'm so thankful for the amazing counselors, Mrs. Hanks, Mrs. Mother, Mrs. Woodson, and for our dedicated principal, Mr. Meeks. You've helped me more than I can explain. Whether it was answering questions, listening when I needed someone, or just making sure I was okay, your support meant everything to me. To my advisor teacher, Mrs. Negrete, right there. Thank you for always believing in me. Your kindness, your support, and your encouragement helped me stay focused and feel seen. You've made a big difference, a big difference in my life. Being in JRTC has also impacted my life. I have learned how to be more disciplined, how to lead others, and how to work as part of a team. It taught me how to stay strong and keep pushing toward my goals. I'm also proud to be of the, sorry, I'm also proud to be part of the Hope Squad, mental health mothers, and sometimes people just need someone to be there for them. I'm glad I can be that person to listen, support, and remind others that they're not alone. And of course, I'm grateful to my family.
Yes, ma'am.
My parents and siblings have always stood by me. They have worked hard, made sacrifices, and never stopped believing in me. Everything I do, I do to make them proud. Looking ahead, my biggest dream is to become a doctor. I want to help people through their hardest moments and bring comfort where they're in pain. It won't be easy, but I'm ready to work for it, and I believe I can make it. My journey hasn't always been easy, but I've learned that with hard work, kindness, and support, anything is possible. I'm proud of how far I've come, and I'm excited for what's next. Thank you all again for this honor. I truly appreciate it.
If it is, if it is okay with you, Dr. Smith and Trustee Haynes are going to come down and take a picture with you and present me with something. You may notice, but we all wear a pin like this. It's a special pin. You can't buy it in the store. You can't win it as a prize in a claw machine. It is something just special, and you are so special that we would like you to be a part of our team and receive one as well. We could have another round of applause.
I am almost speechless, and that doesn't happen very often. I want you to know two things that I heard from your speech there, and I want you to know this from the bottom of my heart as a superintendent. You are the reason we do our work, and you make us better as a school district and a community. I am grateful to be your superintendent and thankful for the work that you have put in, and it's an honor to recognize you as the Student of the Month this month. I can promise you this, you have a home and a family in Arlington ISD.
So, here's the pin that I'm going to provide you. It's a pin that all our trustees wear, and we hope that this shows you that you are truly a part of the Arlington community, and I hope you know that your dedication and your strength and your resiliency is proof that good things happen when you stick to a plan and you work hard, and we couldn't be any prouder of you. So, thank you.
Can we take a picture with you real quick? Where do you want us to stand?
This way, just a little bit. Here you go. I don't want to see her.
Bring your family up, is that all right? Take a picture with family as well? Yes. Come on, we want them all.
Rugi, we are up here discussing the fact that you just learned English a year ago, There are times that we don't even speak our own language, English, well, and you are over there mastering it, and to know that a fourth is headed your way, there is literally nothing I think you could not do. You are the testament of what a strong, powerful woman looks like. For another amazing thing is Item C. It's our Community Partner Awards Night, and here to present it once again, Erin Peralas.
All right. Thank you, Secretary Richardson, Superintendent Matt Smith, Dr. Matt Smith, members of the board. We are truly blessed in Arlington ISD to have a community that every day supports our students, staff, and families, and I'm honored to recognize the Miracle League Arlington this evening. I'd like to ask Executive Director of the Miracle League Arlington, Mindy Shute, to come to the podium while I share some words about how the Miracle League is impacting our students. Tonight, we're proud to honor the Miracle League, which was founded in 2005 by the late Doug Edman with the tremendous support from the city of Arlington, whose vision was simple, yet powerful, to give every child and young adult, regardless of disability, the chance to experience the joy of baseball. With 21 teams, over 300 players, and nearly 900 volunteers this season, Miracle League Arlington creates a safe, spirited space where every game ends in a tie, every player scores, and every athlete is celebrated, nicknames and all. Family members and community volunteers serve as buddies, supporting athletes both at bat and in the field. The league's strong partnership with Arlington ISD includes our Arlington ISD Special Education Department, our Avid Program, campus athletics programs, national honor societies, and key clubs that bring students, staff, and teachers together to cheer, volunteer, and uplift. On opening day and throughout the season, students, student groups, and educators join to support and celebrate these remarkable players. Before I close, I got to say, I got a chance to meet JoJo, and I got a chance to see Samantha again. Samantha's mom was a teacher for me, but I got to be her principal at Crouch Elementary, and I was there when they brought Sam home from the hospital. In meetings, and to see how she's flourished and how the Miracle League is impacting JoJo, I'm just so thankful that you're in our community. The Miracle League Arlington reminds us of what community truly means. For creating joy, breaking barriers, and building an inclusive future through baseball, we are honored to recognize them with this award. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege for me to be able to accept this award on behalf of Miracle League, and we are so grateful for your partnership and your support, from showing up on opening day every season, to volunteering, to bringing your children out, to text and encouragement and support, to sharing our "we need a volunteer" post. We really appreciate all you do. It's really special at any given point. If you look at our field on a Saturday, you will see teachers there, coaching, you will see players from Arlington ISD. You will see teachers coming to watch and cheer on their students in the stands. You will see tons of volunteers being buddies that are Arlington ISD students. Last week, we had a staff come out from Arlington High and bring their staff out, so we had a lot of administrators in our field being buddies and helping. So, it's really special, and we do really appreciate your partnership and all your support and encouragement. And this is kind of a special year for us because we're celebrating our 20th anniversary. So, this is, it's neat that we get to have this honor during our 20th anniversary. We have two of our players here, JoJo, who goes to Butler Elementary, and Samantha, who goes to Sagan. They're both special players and also their parents teach, as Erin said, and then JoJo's dad works in the print shop for Arlington ISD, so that's kind of special. It just shows the depth of our partnership and the community that we're building among each other. So, I'm also very grateful to have my, two of my board members here, Becky and then Jacob Fain, who is our chair of our board, came tonight, so I'm grateful to have them, and so thank you so much for this honor and for recognizing us, and thank you most of all for your partnership and support.
JoJo and Samantha, would you like to say anything? Absolutely. Would you come up to the microphone because we would love to hear from you?
One thing that I really love about Miracle League is no matter who's playing at their level, everyone is still able to, it's not as competitive as, say, a professional, which everyone has each other. If one team isn't doing as well, then the other team is like, hey, how can we help? And that's one thing I really love about Miracle League.
Would it be okay if Dr. Smith and I come down and present an award to you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I get choked up tonight. This is a special population for me, and I'm very grateful for what Miracle League does, and to hear Samantha share that story about what Miracle League does, I think says everything that we need to know and probably gives us a little bit of a lesson about how we need to act as well. Thank you for partnering with us to create opportunities like this for our students to be seen, heard, and celebrated, and who, in all honesty, just enjoy the game of baseball a little bit. So, Mindy, on behalf of Arlington ISD, thank you for being such an amazing community partner for our students in our school district and our district as a whole. We appreciate you.
Mindy, this is special to me because I actually have a student in my children's ministry that plays for Miracle League, and I've been able for years to watch and to be able to volunteer and to see the direct impact that Miracle League has made, not just in his life, but in his family's life. Now, when I asked him, what is his favorite part, because I told him I was going to see you tonight, he said his very favorite part is his buddy and the snacks. That right there is what it's all about. Thank you for providing them fun. Thank you for giving them buddies, and thank you for making sure we made it to 20 years with Miracle League.
We're going to take a brief recess to go celebrate those who have received the awards tonight. We are going to take pictures, we are going to celebrate you, and be able to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for being here. We are going to be back in about 10 minutes, so if we could be back here at 7:43, we are
We are going to reconvene at 7:44. The next portion of our meeting is the Open Forum for Agenda Items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net/BoardMeetingSpeakerRequest. No later than 3:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. Ms. Crossno, do we have any requesters registered to address the board tonight regarding our board items?
Secretary Richardson, we do not.
We are going to go ahead and move to our appointment section then. The first agenda item for consideration tonight is the ratification of an administrative appointment for Chief Communications Officer, as discussed in closed session. Do we have a motion to modify, to, a motion to ratify the appointment of the individual we discussed in closed session?
Motion.
I have a motion from Larry Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Fowler. We will now move to vote. Trustees, please vote. Vice President McMorrow, we will take yours vocally.
Sarah McMorrow, I vote yes.
Unanimous in favor of hiring our new Chief Communications Officer, as discussed. Dr. Smith, do you have a little bit more to tell us?
I do. I'm excited to welcome Ms. Tyena Northington as Arlington ISD's new Communication Officer. Please join me in giving her a round of applause.
Thank you.
Tyena is an award-winning communications professional and a passionate advocate for public education. She comes to us from the private sector and from, previously from Colleen ISD, where she led a nationally recognized team and earned more than 75 gold awards from the Texas School Public Relations Association. Her leadership included the launch of innovative employee recognition campaigns and strategic marketing initiatives that elevated the district's visibility and impact. With her, with a background in Emmy-winning journalism and a career dedicated to education, Tyena brings both experience and heart to this role. She's especially looking forward to supporting principals and departments as they work to connect more deeply with students, families, and the broader community. Tyena, do you have a few words to share with the board this evening?
I do. Thank you so much, Secretary Richardson, Dr. Smith, and board members. Thank you so much for this appointment. It means so much to me to really have your support as we move Arlington ISD into the incredible things that we saw, like Rugi here with our Student of the Month, and earlier today I was able to see Arlington ISD's art show that's actually partnered with Dallas Cowboys and Whataburger. We gave away three scholarships to three seniors totaling $15,000. And when you have a district with partnerships like that and students that are producing incredible work, it's so easy to do this job. What makes it even more special is there are several individuals who've stayed all night long, and they are my team members. I just want you to know all of their names in case you don't know them. Ryan, who's not here with us, but he is always on call. Dorcas, we've got Erin, Spence, McKenzie, Suzanne, Frank, Kendall, Becky, Lance, and Greg. So, I passed that first test of knowing everyone's names because we're on day three, and it is moving so fast. We have very big projects ahead of us. We have a marketing plan, we have convocation, we have pre-K enrollment, and really, this is just getting us started. So, I'm grateful for your support. I encourage you all to follow us, whoever's watching on social media, and I'd be remiss to say, if I wouldn't say hello to my husband and wife for watching me. I'm transitioning here. It is such a big deal for us to move our heart and our home here, and I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you, Tyena. We are excited about this next step and direction with our Communications Department. We welcome you and your family to Arlington. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an EOC accelerated instruction. Dr. Smith?
Dr. Wertz is on his way to the podium this evening to share with us a required report to you all on our accelerated instruction interventions that are provided in Arlington ISD.
All right. Good evening. Secretary, President Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Smith, I'm here tonight to conduct the public hearing about the end-of-course accelerated instruction that we do annually, and our purpose today is to hold a public hearing with regards to the district's effectiveness in providing accelerated instruction program in alignment with TCC Section 29.081. So, the state has requirements around graduation requirements that are connected to the end-of-course STAR exams. In high school, students are required to take four assessments, Algebra I, English I and II, Biology and U.S. History, and these, in order to graduate, you have to have successfully passed all five of them. That's the initial law. If a student does not perform satisfactorily on any of the EOCs that are provided... law. If a student does not perform satisfactorily on any of the EOCs that are provided, the district has to evaluate where those students are and then provide them with opportunities for remediation intervention so they can have another opportunity to be assessed. This data that you see in front of you is our Spring 2024 First Attempt EOC. And we say first attempt, students can take the assessment as many times as offered until they pass. And when we say first attempt, it's the first time that they would be asked to take the assessment post completing the course. So in 2024, they take these in the spring. And if you're reading this graph, what you'll see is the total number of students includes both the salmon and the blue color. And what you'll notice in Algebra I, for example, we had 75% of the total students that took it on their first attempt pass. And then the salmon color on the top would be those students that would be looked at to participate in intervention program so they can attempt to try to pass the assessment in the future. Each of the numbers that you see in front of you are for each of the corresponding five end-of-course exams that high school students participate in. House Bill 4545 and 1460 have a few requirements related to student success on EOC assessments and the kind of remediation or interventions that you provide them. If a student, for example, does not achieve at least approaches grade level on any of the STAR assessments, the law requires that they either be assigned to a teacher who is designated in the TIA Teacher Incentive Allotment Program, which we don't currently have here in Arlington. We have a few designated teachers that have come from other systems. So if that is not a possibility, then what the district is required to do is to provide high-impact tutoring to those students. And each student, depending upon the number of courses that they have not passed, are eligible to receive a minimum of 15 or 30 hours of direct tutoring. It is limited to two subjects per year so that students aren't having to engage in 120 hours of tutoring over the course of the year. But the priority is given to mathematics and to reading. The group's sizes are also small. So the law requires that the group sizes be no more than four students per one teacher. However, a parent or guardian can provide consent for the students to engage in their remediation in a larger group. And it's also designed to be provided using high-quality instructional materials through a trained instructor. We have four pathways for accelerated instruction for EOC courses here in Arlington. We have remediation courses that are available for students who have not successfully passed EOC but may have passed the course. We have credit recovery courses where students may have to earn or recover credit that they failed as part of a course. And then we also have both Read 180 and Math 180 courses, which are, they're a course that has a portion of it that the teacher provides and also a place where students can be accelerated or remediated through a software program that really targets their individual learning needs. This just gives you a brief overview of the number of sections of each of those intervention programs that we have across our district within each of the comprehensive high schools as well as Turning Point and Venture Newcomer Program. And this also is the budget for our total accelerated instruction program over the course of the year. One thing I wanted to point out on this budget is it includes payroll costs. And when we say payroll costs, what we're not suggesting in this slide is that this value of money is designated only to the students who failed their EOC. This is the interventions that are put in place throughout the school year, all year long. Many students receive interventions in order for them to pass on the very first attempt. So even when you look at the, for example, the Algebra I pass rates for the first attempt in 2024, that's 75%. Many of those students may have engaged in interventions on their campuses, and the staff that provide those things are included in these numbers. We also wanted to show you a little bit about the numbers in terms of the total volume of students who participate in what we call retesting, so June and/or December. You'll notice that in the students in the gray bars in June, that represents the students who did not retest. And I just wanted to highlight that because if you look at this, at first you're like, why is that bar so big? And the reason being is because many students don't receive their scores until June. And if they, for some reason, miss a portion of summer school, right when this test is given, they may not actually sit for the exam in June. They will sit for the exam in December. So you'll notice in the December months, that bar of not retesting is a lot smaller because those students are actually in school and then they do reassess. This gives you a sense of the total cumulative data for 2024. So this would be the students who participated in testing, both in their spring assessment, their June assessment, and/or the December assessment. And what you'll notice is the total number of students that actually retest, who, for example, in Algebra I, who passed within the second or third try, was increased by 8%. And then if you go across each of the graphs, you'll see in Biology up by 5%, English 1.7, English 2.4, and English 3, sorry, US History 3%. The last component I wanted to share with you today as part of the public hearing was related to Senate Bill 149. And this is about individual graduation committees. So what the state law has provided is an opportunity for students to still earn a diploma if they haven't been able to pass all five assessments. There is a requirement, they have to have passed a minimum of three. They have to have attempted all offered EOC administrations. And they also have to engage in the interventions and requirements that a committee determines they need to achieve in order for them to meet the requirements for graduation. Once they meet their credit requirements and those additional interventions that the committee designates, then they're eligible to graduate, even if they've only passed three of the five required assessments. And that's the public hearing.
Thank you for your report. Mrs. Crossno, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak regarding the EOC accelerated instruction for the public hearing?
Secretary Richardson, we do not.
We have no registered speakers, so thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Moving on to reports, our first report tonight is a compensation analysis and a market review from Dr. Smith.
This evening, I think I would like to introduce Mr. Scott Cale, but Mr. Scott Cale walked toward the back here just a second ago. I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Cale, who will present alongside Holly Stanbar, Senior Director of Human Resources, Compensation Benefits, and Risk Management. This report this evening is a comparison of where we stand in the market. There is no action that we are asking for from you all this evening. It is simply a report based on information that our staff and Tasby have found.
Good evening, Secretary Richardson, board members, and Dr. Smith. Thank you so much for having us. We're going to start this evening with a presentation by Keith McLemore from Tasby, and he's going to help us with the market analysis. And we'll follow that with a little bit of application from Holly Stanbar, our Director of Compensation, in how that information applies to our district. So thank you for having us, Keith.
Thank you. Good evening, Secretary Richardson, trustees, and Dr. Smith, or Superintendent Smith. I'm Keith McLemore, and I'm a senior consultant with Tasby. And I do primarily HR and compensation work. And so this is a pay maintenance type project where we're just going to, we're focusing on looking at how your district, your employee pay compares to market as well as your pay structures. And so it's going to be a brief overview of the results. So just a quick overview of the process, three major steps. There's data collection. We have a kickoff call right before that with district leadership. But we get your data. We clean the employee data, make sure everything looks right. And once we feel good about that, I'll move in and do my part of it, which is the market pay review, where I'm matching your jobs with market, benchmark jobs in the market. We'll talk a little bit more about market in a second. And then ultimately, we realign, in this case, because we've worked with you for many years, realign your pay structures to market and provide cost estimates based on adjusting employee pay and including special fixes for things like internal and external equity. Quick look at pay system controls. This is considered a market-based pay system whereby, this is for non-teachers. For non-teachers, there are pay grades, where there are pay grade minimums and maximums and a midpoint. And so those can be considered your pay system controls. And the idea is to group jobs by similar market value into pay grades. These are hypothetical pay grades. And the minimum and maximums are set to help avoid under and overpayment for market value, which ultimately not only helps you stay competitive, but hopefully you're not overpaying for job value or underpaying for job value. And also, in a market-based pay system, the idea is raises are calculated as a percentage of these midpoints, which is justifiable because the midpoints are based on market values. So let's jump into the results briefly. This is the group of peer districts that were used for the project. We try to keep these as similar as possible from year to year. So the measuring stick is the same. And two districts did not do our survey. That's where the majority of the data comes from, is a Tasby statewide survey. And, but those two districts were Carrollton Farmers Branch and Fort Worth. But we do reach out or find their teacher hiring schedule, at least have that in the mix for comparing your teacher hiring schedule to market. Non-school market values are brought in and averaged with school, the survey data, which is school-based that we have. And they're from the local Fort Worth area. And that comes from two companies, Comp Analyst and Pay Factors by Pay Scale. Think about jobs like a mechanic or an accountant, jobs where they can do, you know, they can come work here or go down the street and work at a private company. And let's talk about your teachers briefly, real quick. What you're looking at here is a distribution of current total experience and how many teachers you have with those different years of experience. So the X-axis is experience, and the Y-axis, the up and down, is how many teachers you have at those different levels. Nothing really out of the ordinary or exceptional here. Just that 50th percentile shows you at 10 years is the median, basically. But on average, if you look at the average, y'all have 11, your teachers have 11 years of experience. Was it perfectly aligned with the statewide average? And this is a pie graph, looking at just those new hires you have this year for teachers and librarians. 441 at the time of data collection. You can see, not surprisingly, the biggest pie slice are those that came in and are new to the profession. 42% had that, so were new to the profession. All right, let's look at this market graph. So this is looking at the five benchmark years of your teacher and hiring schedule base compared with the market. The orange is Arlington. The more bluish colors, the market, you're pretty much symmetrical, which is pretty ideal, whether you're a district that chooses to match market, lead market, or lag market. And so you have a good position market-wise here, which is commendable. This is the market, the data, the raw data that drives that chart. And you can see Arlington's hiring schedule, those five benchmark years, is in that first white row. Market values are in the second. The percentages are in the third white row. And the difference from market is a dollar in dollars, you can see down there. And that kind of puts into perspective that you're anywhere from $2,850 above market at year zero to $3,600 above at year 10. A new data point there is that average salary. You can see that y'all are 6% above market or just under $4,000 over the median. So teachers are in good shape. Your hiring schedule's in good shape. We also take a quick peek at these add-on stipends that are given to teachers to help recruit and retain in hardest staff areas. Master's degrees, secondary math, science, special education bilingual, and ESL are the ones that y'all have offerings that we're pointing out here. And you can see the number of districts reporting out there to the right. That can help you see what's hot and what's maybe not as crucial in your area. For instance, ESL General, 2 of 12 districts offer that versus Special Education High Needs, 10 of 12. And you can see you're above market for all of those except for secondary math and science. 1,000 versus 2,000. Looking at non-teacher market or job groups, what you're looking at here are the exempt non-teaching type jobs. So they're broken up into four principal categories. Central administration are going to be your director jobs and hire typically. And then campus admin are going to be your principals, assistant principals, professionals, think accountants, coordinators, specialists. And technology is pretty self-explanatory. Pretty unique to be above market by comfortable margins like you are across the board. So kudos to the district for maintaining competitive pay. Technology is worth noting or focusing on because that's usually where districts have a hard time competing with the private sector. And y'all are in good shape there at 6% above market. The other, third column there is how your pay grades compare to market. Reason we want to show that is because, like I mentioned, you're calculating increases off of the midpoint. So you want to have competitive, market-based, and competitive midpoint. So you're in good shape for those, all above market. And you can see the number of jobs or benchmarks that are types of jobs that were compared for each of the groups. Let's look at these, briefly, these non-exempt jobs. So they're broken up into three groups. You have your educational aides. They're pretty self-explanatory. Your admin, support, think admin assistants, accounts payable clerks, et cetera. And auxiliary, which are going to be bus drivers and custodial staff, mechanics, et cetera. And for pay, you're above market at all three, for all three groups, anywhere from 1% above to 21% above. And pay grade midpoints, anywhere from right at market to 30% above. And also included here is important for this group in particular are those minimums. Because when people think about when, you know, when you're starting out, you look at those minimums. And if your minimums are competitive, it's going to help you recruit and also help ensure you're giving, you know, going to get people to market more quickly. So those minimums are all either at market for each of your groups or up to 28% above. And you can see the number of jobs that were benchmarked. So I have a summary slide this time around. As was mentioned earlier, I believe, we don't have any direct recommendations at this point because the legislature's in flux. But just the notes I wanted to make was that ASD does a commendable job ensuring competitive pay while avoiding extreme over or underpayment for job value. I work with a lot of districts. This is my 11th year almost. And so I speak from experience. The district is doing well with this, with those sorts of things. And the next bullet is about how the district strives to maintain competitive pay structures for all job families, which is a key factor in successful recruitment and retention of highly qualified candidates. The team I work with is always asking, you know, where are we weakest? What can we do to tackle that? And how can we, you know, make things more competitive? And so kudos to y'all for adopting the plans that are brought to you and to the leadership team. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Does anyone have any questions? Going once, going twice? Okay. Thank you so much for being here, Mr. McLemore.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I did not officially close out our public hearing earlier, so I'm going to go ahead and make sure we have officially closed out of our public hearing. I apologize for missing that. But we are, as of 8:07, we are officially closed out of public hearing, just for the record. Item B is a report on the work of the committee studying the teacher incentive allotment. Dr. Smith?
Secretary Richardson, we're not quite there yet. We have a second half of the compensation market analysis presentation that Holly Stanbar is here to present to you.
Holly, I'm so sorry I skipped you.
You're perfectly okay. I can let dollars go. I'm just kidding. Thank you, Ms. Richardson, for having me. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Dr. Smith. And thank you, Keith McLemore from Tasby. He is a great resource to the district, to the HR team, to the finance team. We really appreciate his guidance and for coming out all this way from Austin this evening. So this is my portion of the compensation market analysis. And this is to review our current compensation market position, legislative updates pertaining to compensation and district healthcare contributions. So this is the UEA report that they put out every year. And I show this to you every year, just because I want to show that we're, we've got a really competitive market position. We're pretty much across the top in the metroplex from our zero year all the way through our 30-year. And so it's important that we continue to monitor this to make sure that we're staying competitive with our salary position. Keith showed this slide earlier, but I really enjoyed this slide because it really continues to highlight Arlington ISD. And you can see where we are in comparison to our local market. And we're really trending in a very good position. And so I want to highlight this again because kudos to you guys for everything you do. And it's really important that we show this information and how great of a job we're doing for our teachers. Our market position for some of our other groups, our auxiliary is 103% of the market currently. Our administrative support is 100% of the market. Educational aides is 121% of the market. Technology is 106% of the market. Our professionals are 108% of the market. Our campus administration is 109% of the market. And our central administration is 106% of the market. And the average is the market position. So these are an average of those salaries in those groups. And so this is the average of those market positions. And as Keith mentioned earlier, market is midpoint. And as Keith mentioned earlier, market is midpoint. And just to understand what midpoint is, midpoint is generally the average salary that is expected for someone to be fully qualified. So those are, that's the, that's kind of where we want to be. That's the average salary for someone to be fully qualified. Okay, so the legislative update, we're right now in the 89th Texas Legislative Session, as everyone knows here. It's anticipated to be over on June 2 of 2025. The last increase to the basic allotment was in 2019, and that was with HB3, House Bill 3, and it was 5140, and it went to 6160 in 2019. House Bill 2 is something that's being proposed right now, and it would increase the basic allotment by $395 to $6,555. And then of that, 40% of a basic allotment increase would go to salaries for school staff. Now, this is if it was signed into law, so we're monitoring this. House Bill 2 includes higher salary increases funded by additional money in the allotment that would go to teachers with more than a decade of classroom experience. There are current unknowns about what this additional funding will be and how it will apply to the districts. And we will partner with TASB. Again, Keith's been a great resource and he'll give us some guidance, but we're going to continue to partner with TASB on any legislative mandates pertaining to HB2 and salary increases if it's signed into law. We do have a couple of position-specific considerations that we've been reviewing, and that's attendance clerks at elementary, at junior high, and high school, that they may benefit from regrading based on market. And the benefit would be an equity adjustment from an administrative grade one to an administrative grade two, and then additional strategic adjustments to eliminate any employee wage compression. The attendance clerk role has evolved since it was originally graded, pay graded, and attendance clerks are responsible for key PMS, data critical for state funding. Another position-specific consideration is an athletic trainer stipend adjustment. The athletic trainer stipends are below the benchmark market comparison when you consider the total compensation. And what I mean by that is when you're looking at the salary plus the stipend, we're a little bit below market, and so you compare the two, that's an area that we could look to improve a little. All right, TRS active care medical premiums. This model below reflects a projected TRS active care increase of 10% to 15% annually with that additional funding from the state. And then premiums for TRS active care are typically released in May of each year. However, due to a legislative year, the premiums for '25, '26 are anticipated to be released around June 3 of 2025. Originally, they were saying it could, it could be as late as the end of June, and so I'm glad that that's looking to move up a little bit. The chart below shows you what a 10% increase would be for our employees. Now, this is without our district contribution in both, but I listed those district contributions at the bottom. But if we had a 10% increase to the employee only for TRS active care primary, it's $51, but you can see for the employee and family, that's $172 just for a 10% increase. And then for a 15% increase for TRS active care primary, that's $76 to the employee and $258 to employee family. And then active care HD, between primary and HD, those are our most commonly selected plans. It would be $52 for the employee and 177 for employee and family, and for 15% would be $78 for the employee and $265 for employee and family. I understand there's employee and spouse and employee and children, but I wanted to specifically point out those two. Arlington ISD does contribute $332 per month. That does include our wellness program for participation for our paraprofessional and our auxiliary staff, and 317 per month for our professional staff. Okay, so in addition to healthcare alternatives, we do offer, like I said, the $51 per month wellness incentive. This is the UEA ranking that was shared out last month, and it had Arlington ISD ranked at 44, but if you factor in our wellness contribution, that we encourage all of our employees to participate in wellness. If they do participate in wellness and they earn the points, we give them that $51 a month credit, and that would put us in the market position at 29 based on the UEA educators comparison. So AISD healthcare contributions were last increased for the '21, '22 plan year by $31. The table below indicates current district contribution versus our top quartile and market midpoint. So off to the left, to be in the top quartile, and I'll go back one slide, the top quartile, you can see if you look at the first 12, 12 to 15, that monthly is about $350, $361, that's their contribution. That's what I'm referring to when I mean the top quartile. So to get to the top quartile, we would have to contribute an extra $44 per month. We average anywhere from 4,000 to 5,200 participants. It varies year-to-year based on enrollment. To get to the market midpoint of those comparable districts, an average $10 per employee per month. And again, our healthcare contribution includes wellness contribution, or our healthcare contribution does include wellness, because we do encourage all of our employees to participate and be involved in wellness. And I do want to point out that these comparative numbers do not account for what anybody, what other districts would do next school year, so that could change our position. Any questions?
Trustees, we wanted to, as we open it up for questions, again, this is just a report to give you from TASB perspective and from Arlington ISD perspective, the research that we've done and how our pay is according to the market. As you know, we're going to be coming to you with recommendations later in the spring here as we adopt budgets and stuff, but we wanted to make sure you had the information as soon as possible. Holly, I do have one question before we open it up to trustees. When we talk about 105% or 106% of the midpoint on some of the things that you shared, what contributes to that? Is that just the starting salary, or is that, are years of experience in the position factored into those numbers that you shared for us?
That's generally going to be based on years of experience. When we hire employees and they have years of experience from the outside, we give them wage credit for that experience. And so when we average all that information and we compare it to market, our employees' average salaries are above market position.
I appreciate that clarification. It's just, I think it's important to point out, we're not comparing starting salaries or zero-year experiences and stuff when we're saying the percentage according to the market. Some of that is due to the fact that we do have people who have been in Arlington for a long time and stayed in Arlington for a long time, which is a great thing for us as well. And at this time, we'll turn it over to you as trustees for any questions or comments.
Trustees, do we have any questions? Trustee Will Banks?
Thank you, Secretary Richardson, and I do have a question. It was kind of related to Mr. McLemore's presentation where he showed the only stipend where we were not as competitive was for secondary math and science, if I believe. You talked about looking at the total compensation for librarians and TAs, and have you looked at the need to adjust that stipend?
At this time, we have not. We work with TASB every other year to do our stipend market.
And this isn't the year.
Yes, but we do look at internal stipends on our, with me and my own team. And so I look for things like such as the athletic stipends where we see that we're falling low. And so we kind of analyze that, and when we see that there's patterns of that staying low, we bring those recommendations to you guys to consider. That has not been fully brought to my attention as being a concern, at least from the campuses, from recruitment and retention. That is certainly something that we're certainly ready and prepared to look into.
Yeah, that was my next question. Is that an area where we're seeing difficulty recruiting qualified chemistry teachers, for instance? And I guess the answer is no.
Not, unless Mr. Cale knows something that I don't on that, I'll ask him to come up if he wants. He works a lot more closer to our recruiting team.
So, evening, Mr. Will Banks. So that's an area that's consistently a challenge, hasn't really changed. And for the last 10 years, it's probably falling a little behind sped in bilingual in terms of the challenges when it comes to recruiting, but it's always difficult to find math and science, particularly in secondary. It's a challenge in terms of labor pool availability. To Holly's point, while we look at stipends in a very formal way every two years, and she's paying attention in the off-years, it is something that could use attention. There's a number of things that fall in that category, and I think the thing I heard her say that I want to repeat is it's the thematic repetition, because the market also has a tendency to sway up and down. And so if we react in any given year, we can actually react too quickly and sometimes overreact. And once we put something out there, it's not reasonable to bring it back. So we'll watch it very closely. We'll certainly take the TASB data we have and see if that generates another recommendation for this year. We certainly will include it in our considerations.
Yeah, and I know anecdotally from the parents I talk to, that's always been an area of concern for parents.
Yes.
Is, you know, are we putting the best people forward to best prepare our students for the challenges of university? And so seeing that we're low there, I'd like to really look at how we can be better at attracting quality candidates for those areas in particular.
Absolutely. We'll make sure, include it for sure.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions at this time? Okay. Now, thank you for your report, and we will move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B is a report on the work of the committee studying the teacher incentive allotment. Dr. Smith?
I'd like to invite Ms. Dollars Johnson up. She is going to, and she has guests tonight. This is exciting. She has guests with her this evening, and they're going to give you an overview of what they have been studying. As our trustee should remember, we provided to you some information in the fall, I believe it was in the fall, on this, and we're bringing back as promised information to you as we've continued to study the teacher incentive allotment.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Secretary Richardson and members of the board. I am really excited to be here to share with you all important updates about the teacher incentive allotment initiative. As Dr. Smith shared, in the fall, we shared that we were going to study this and gather feedback from our teachers, and we're going to provide an update on the district's exploration of the TIA. We're going to share some key milestones and preliminary insights from our work. We're also happy to have Principal Ayesha Ramos and Ms. Bryn Stutz, a first-grade teacher at Peach Elementary School. They were engaged in this process, and they're going to share their insights and experiences from our campus engagement. We developed a TIA steering committee to provide oversight of this process. The steering committee was thoughtfully selected to ensure comprehensive representation across the district. We brought together diverse perspectives from multiple departments and divisions just to foster inclusive and well-rounded discussions around TIA. These departments included the Human Resources Department, School Leadership, Communications, Research and Accountability, the Special Education Department, Curriculum and Instruction, Rural Languages, and Academic Services. Since the fall of 2024, this committee has worked to carry out the roles and responsibilities you see displayed here. Our engagement process was designed to be iterative and inclusive, ensuring that we gathered meaningful feedback at every stage of the process. We started by just identifying any key questions, and then we used multiple methods. We used thought exchanges, surveys, focus groups, just to collect diverse perspectives from our teachers. From there, we shared and jointly interpreted the data, ensuring transparency and alignment with our district priorities. Finally, we did assess risk and opportunities using the feedback to refine a hypothetical TIA model for further discussion with our teachers. We've made intentional efforts to ensure teachers across the district were informed, engaged, and had multiple opportunities to share input on the teacher incentive allotment process. We began our engagement efforts by meeting with the United Educators Association Campus Representatives. During this meeting, we provided a comprehensive overview of the TIA program. UEA representatives were also invited to participate in a thought exchange to share their feedback and help us surface any key questions or themes that may emerge. Then in December, we expanded our outreach by meeting with the district's lead teachers to share updates and gather their insights. Additionally, we created a TIA overview video, and we shared it with our campus principals with the request that they share it during their staff meeting. This ensured that every teacher had access to consistent baseline information regardless of their role on campus. As a result of these efforts, we had over 1,000 teachers participate in a thought exchange. Their feedback was instrumental in shaping our next steps. One of the reoccurring questions we received was, what could this look like for me as a teacher in the classroom? Teachers really wanted to understand how a TIA model would function, specifically in Arlington ISD. To create a space for two-way dialogue, in January and February, we hosted a series of after-hours TIA information sessions open to all teachers. We invited Arlington campus administrators who had previously worked in TIA implementing districts, as well as teachers who had earned designations elsewhere and are now with Arlington. Their firsthand experiences helped other teachers understand the process, and they answered a lot of questions. Then in February, we hosted TIA focus group meetings. These were held at four campuses across the district and were intentionally designed to be interactive and transparent. Based on teacher questions and concerns, our TIA steering committee developed a hypothetical model to illustrate what TIA could look like in our district should we choose to apply. These models were shared during the group sessions to gather more targeted feedback. As we shared, as a part of our stakeholder engagement efforts, we gathered feedback from over 1,000 teachers in December of 2024 through a thought exchange. Teachers were asked to share their thoughts on the opportunities and challenges they foresee in Arlington ISD if Arlington ISD were to apply for the teacher incentive allotment program. This slide here summarizes the top themes that emerged. To better understand and respond to teacher input, we have organized the feedback here into three areas shown. Key concerns, a summary of teacher concerns, and committee insight. The first column outlines the major themes that consistently surfaced across campuses. These included concerns around fairness, school culture, motivation, complexity of implementation, and ultimately, the impact on our students. Next, in the middle column, we summarize the specific feedback teachers provided with each theme. For example, under fairness, teachers emphasize the importance of ensuring equitable opportunities across all content areas and reducing potential bias in teacher evaluations. And then what you'll see in teacher motivation, they express interest in incentives but also concerns about increased pressure in the classroom. And finally, in that last column, this reflects the insights and considerations our steering committee has developed in direct response to teacher input. Ultimately, this feedback helped the steering committee plan our focus group sessions. The focus group sessions were developed in response to teachers wanting more information into what this could look like should Arlington choose to apply for TIA. This allowed us to take a deeper dive into specific questions and gather more qualitative feedback. So in January, we hosted after-hours focus group sessions just across the district. A total of 58 teachers attended those sessions, representing all grade levels. These sessions were open to all teachers, and our goal was to have a representative from each campus. We asked the participants how comfortable they felt giving feedback on TIA based on what they currently understood. Well over half of the participants shared that they were comfortable giving feedback. This was an indicator that our earlier efforts to communicate helped build some understanding. The pie chart that you're seeing there shows the grade level of the teachers who attended the focus group sessions, and the bar chart actually represents the content areas. These small focus groups provided a valuable space for honest feedback. The thought exchange data from these focus groups is actually in the appendix. We visited Peach Elementary School, Sam Houston High School, Workman Junior High, and Adams Elementary School. In our February focus group meetings, teachers were asked to weigh in on hypothetical models of the teacher incentive allotment for Arlington ISD. The models we explored focused specifically, excuse me, on reading and math teachers at high-needs campuses as an initial starting point. We asked for teacher input in three core areas tied to TIA design, measuring student growth, evaluating teachers, and developing a spending plan. At this time, I'd like to introduce Principal Ayesha Ramos. At this time, I'd like to introduce Principal Ayesha Ramos, who leads Peach Elementary School, and Ms. Bryn Stutz.
Thank you. Good evening, Secretary Richardson, Superintendent Smith, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I did have the privilege of hosting one of the information sessions at our campus, and I'd like to briefly share my reflections. So the session lasted about an hour and a half and was clearly designed for genuine input, not to present a predetermined plan but to truly listen to educators across the district. Many of our teachers left saying it was the most they had learned about TIA to date. They appreciated that questions were not leading and that genuine input was sought out, even down to, from everything from waiting the T-test descriptors and student growth scores to potential barriers and use of the supplemental funds that might come with that. It was clear that feedback was being gathered to inform, not just to validate the work of the steering committee. This thoughtful approach led by Ms. Dolores Johnson has prioritized research, cautionaries from other districts, and authentic collaboration. As a campus principal, it was reassuring to see that if our district elects to apply for TIA, that the appropriate time was and will continue to be taken, research conducted, and teacher input solicited in order to ensure maximum success with implementation. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Bryn Stutz, one of our proud Peach teachers, who will share her perspective as a participant in the process.
Thank you, Principal Ramos, and good evening, Secretary Richardson, Board of Members, and thank you, Dr. Matt Smith, Superintendent. Thank you all for all having me here. I'm a proud Peach Viking first-grade teacher. I previously taught third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade in Arlington ISD, and I am actually a product of Arlington ISD since fourth grade. A little bit of experience. Yes. All right, thank you. At the information session, teachers and other various professionals were able, excuse me, were able to ask questions in an open forum type setting. It was very comfortable. We were able to come and present our questions, and we heard from other teachers who have also had distinguishments. They've had distinguished teachers and others who came from other districts who have already implemented TIA, so it was really beneficial hearing them. We talked about the advantages and disadvantages if TIA was to come to Arlington ISD. Later, I attended a TIA focus group at Workman Junior High. That was also very beneficial. We were able to dissect a survey question by question, and then we were able to answer those questions privately about TIA. Then before going to each session, you know, I questioned teachers, you know, before going to each one, like, what do you think? What do you feel? And so I was able to come and present their questions as well. And overall, it's been a very beneficial experience, and I was able to come back after that and bring it to my campus and other teachers throughout the district. So throughout the whole process, I felt like I've actually had my voice heard, and I appreciate that the steering committee has the teachers' best interests in mind. All right, thank you, Dolores Johnson, for inviting me, and thank you, Board members.
Thank you both so much for joining us this evening. So after gathering and reviewing feedback from our teachers in December, we also engaged our campus administrators to explore how these concerns could be addressed at the campus level should Arlington choose to apply for TIA. So what you see here are the reflections and recommendations and ideas from our principals and how they would respond on campus should we move forward with a TIA application. This chart follows the same structure as the one summarizing teacher input and includes those three key columns: Key Concerns, aligned directly to our teacher feedback; the categories fairness, school culture, teacher motivation, implementation challenges, and student impact mirror what we heard from our teachers. In the second column, we summarize the core recommendations that principals surfaced. For example, they highlighted the importance of ensuring clarity and transparency under fairness and building trust in inclusive environments under school culture. Column three includes samples of principal-driven solutions and just specific strategies principals proposed they could implement to address some of those teacher concerns. We do not believe that our work ends here. The steering committee would like to continue to gather structured feedback from teachers, especially those in reading and math at our high-needs campuses. We plan to continue to use a combination of tools through thought exchange, surveys, small teacher focus groups, to keep the communication two-way and responsive. And we've heard clearly from our teachers that clarity is non-negotiable in this process. So a second key step is proactively identifying any teacher concerns that are surfaced, such as evaluation fairness, workload, or growth measures, and work collaboratively with teachers and principals to address them. Finally, we are mindful of the broader timeline, and should Arlington choose to move forward with the next official TIA application, the cycle begins in April of 2026. This would give the steering committee critical time to engage deeply with all stakeholders and to ensure that any decisions that are made reflect our district's needs and our teachers' voices.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for all of you being here. Do we have any questions from the board? Trustee Haynes?
Sorry, we have a lot of computers up here, a lot of screens. So just two comments. One, I want to thank you and your committee for how thoughtful and just intentional you were in this process and gathering information. I think as a board, we've been working to move culture as a priority, and I think the way that you guys handled this process shows that we are taking steps in that direction. So I'm incredibly proud of you guys for that.
Thank you.
And just so thankful that you took that approach. Second, one of my biggest concerns with TIA is how, obviously, it will affect our students. I know that there's a lot of buzz in the teacher world, and I understand that, but speaking from my mom lens, I am concerned with, if implemented, how this would impact our students. And I will say that I appreciate, in your third column on a lot of the slides, I saw that the committee recognized that, and there was lots of speak about that. I saw my students versus our students, which, to me, is huge because they're all of our students. And so I just want to encourage you guys to keep students at the forefront of this discussion. I think that that's incredibly important, so thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Will Banks?
Thank you, Secretary Richardson, and thank you, Leanne. I, too, want to concur with what she said about how thoughtful and you guys were and really listening on what the concerns were. I had just three questions, and one, I know you were kind of focused on the focus groups, but did you guys, and you did talk to some teachers who came from outside the district that are TIA-certified or were in districts with TIA. Were they able to talk about the concerns specifically that you guys identified in the focus groups, and what was their temperature and overall impression? What was the feedback like that you actually received from them?
Yes, they did, and it was a little bit of a mixed bag, depending on the district that they came from. Every district implements TIA differently depending on their needs, but they were able to answer a lot of our teachers' questions and concerns.
Great. And so you were able to look at those exemplars out there and what not to do?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yes.
If we were to implement this. And did you guys look at the competitive landscape around us to see how many districts are either currently offering TIA or in the process of developing a TIA program?
I know we don't have the, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I do know a lot of our neighboring districts are already implementing the program.
And then, did you guys, I know, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm kind of outdated on which bills are currently surviving in committee, but was it SB 26 that was putting the increase on school funding and weighting that on TIA? And is that, is that the bill that we think is going to be substituted in for HB 2, the funding bill?
I don't believe it was SB 26, but I am, I do believe that we are going to see an increase in funding for the teacher incentive allotment even to what the House allocated in House Bill 2 in his past, based on the things that we are hearing. I don't, I can't confirm whether that was SB 26 or not.
Okay. Yeah, and so, given the pressure, I think we need to do what's right for Arlington and listen to our teachers on this, and we have real big concerns. There was a lot of trepidation expressed from my colleagues last time this topic came up, and we need to be very sensitive to those concerns that you've outlined here, especially on school culture. That's a big concern for mine, but given the pressure, I like that we're looking at, if we were to have to do this, how could we do it so it best fits Arlington and minimizes the risk that we see with adopting a plan like this? So I just want to kudos to you guys for doing the work that you did and laying the groundwork on this. And I know there's just going to be increased pressure for us as a district to move forward with something like this, but we're still in the middle of the legislative session, so who knows? But this is a great contingency plan regardless, so I really appreciate the effort that went into this.
Thank you.
I do want to, first of all, I want to thank, and I didn't earlier, I want to thank Scott "Holly" Dolores Melody's back there as well for the work that they've done in studying important things that are presented to you tonight. The approach, I agree with what Ms. Haynes said, the approach, I think, has been outstanding in this, and probably to the dismay of our HR team, I have had a lot of trepidation about some of this for a number of reasons: student impact, the idea of teaching to the test, the idea of what's really going to happen, and if we actually have valid data about what it would do for students in the end. I do believe at this point it is our duty to continue studying this. Every indication that we have is that the legislature is going to push boardships in on the teacher incentive allotment. In fact, in every legislative discussion that we had from October, probably through middle of March, I was asked, do you participate in the teacher incentive allotment when I brought up school funding with our legislators? And I think it's important for us to realize that's the landscape that's in front of us moving forward, and this is coming from a person who's been concerned about this program. So therefore, you saw the timelines that are in front of you. I do think it's going to be important for our team to continue studying. As Trustee Will Banks said, the legislature is not concluded yet. A finance bill has not been passed at this point. We don't know exactly what things might look like in this legislative session as we land the plane here in the next month. But I think our job is probably to keep this going, continue the study, make sure that the voice of our teachers and principals continues to be heard and that we can develop a plan that is right for Arlington for our trustees potentially to consider prior to April of next year because of that timeline coming. So trustees, there could be a decision that the board would have to make at that time, and the ask that we would have is, prior to then, is to really think about the questions you have regarding such programs, and start, we can start gathering that information and do our best to present the right information to you should that time come for the future.
Thank you. Vice President McMurro, do you have any questions? I'm going to say she does not. She is, her microphone is not working. Are you good, Vice President? Okay. Thank you so much for being here. One of the things that I'm grateful for is that we had over 1,000 responses. I think that right there speaks to the fact of how engaged our teachers are and the fact that they want to have a say-so. It is nice to know their level of involvement and engagement. This matters. I know we have a lot of them who are watching tonight. When they saw this agenda published, they want to know what direction we're going, and even though we don't have an answer yet, for them to know the research is being done. Principal Ramos, for you to be able to explain how that has looked at a campus level and the discussion that you've had, for them to see where we are and that transparency to our teachers, I appreciate that you're willing to come and share that and show that tonight. Thank you. We are now going to turn to the action portion of tonight's meeting. Item A is the consideration for teacher probationary and term contracts. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, the information has been presented to you this evening regarding probationary term contracts, and we ask that you take action on the items and information that has been presented at this time.
Is there any discussion, trustees? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the teacher probationary and term contracts as presented?
So moved.
Trustee Will Banks? Is there a second? Trustee Fowler? We'll now move to vote. Trustees, please vote. Vice President McMurro, we will take yours verbally.
I vote yes.
Six in favor?
I vote yes.
Thank you. We have six in favor, none opposed. The motion passes. We will now move to consider action item B, the consideration for term of contracts for administrative and professional staff. Dr. Smith?
Similar in nature, trustees, tonight we have provided you with information regarding our recommendations for term contracts for administrative and professional staff. We ask you to take action on this tonight.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none from our trustees, is there a motion to approve the contracts for administrative and professional staff as presented?
Motion.
Motion from Trustee Fowler. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second from Trustee Will Banks. We'll now move to vote. Vice President McMurro, can I please have your vote?
I vote yes.
All in favor, six, none opposed. The motion does pass. The next action item is the proposed termination of a probationary contract employee. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, for your approval, the proposed termination of probationary contract employee Jordan Versi is presented to you tonight. We ask you to take action on this.
Do we have any discussion, trustees? Seeing none, is there a motion to terminate the probationary contract of Jordan Versi?
Motion.
Motion from Trustee Fowler. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Haynes, second. We will now vote. Vice President, oh, I'm sorry, Attorney Eichelbaum?
Madam President, there's a specific motion. It should be, I move to terminate the probationary contract of the individual. Do you have a copy of the motion?
I do not have a copy of that motion, but I have total faith in Trustee Fowler that she can make that.
In the best interest of the district.
You want to touch your mic? There we go.
Thank you. I move to consider the termination of probationary contract employee Jordan Versi by AISD.
If I may, the motion should read, and someone can just say, so moved. I move to terminate the probationary contract of Jordan Versi in the best interest of the district.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Fowler. We have a second still from Trustee Haynes?
Second.
Second. We will now move to vote. Trustees, if we could have your vote. Vice President McMurro, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
All in favor, that is six, zero opposed, and the motion passes. The next action item is item D, to consider resolution and construction easement to the city of Arlington for Anderson Elementary. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, you've been provided with all the information about this easement to you this evening. We ask for your approval for this easement to be conducted.
Do we have anyone who would like to make the resolution? Trustee Mike?
Yes. I move to approve the attached resolution and temporary construction easement to the city of Arlington for Anderson Elementary for the installation of a new public sanitary sewer line. sewer line.
Do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Trustee Will Banks, second. If we could all vote. Vice President McMurro, I will take yours verbally.
I vote yes.
Yes. That is all in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes. Next item on our list is E, to consider a resolution for a public sanitary sewer easement to the city of Arlington for Anderson Elementary School.
Trustees, similar in nature, we've provided you all the information regarding this easement, and we ask you for your approval this evening.
Do I have a motion?
Yep.
For a resolution?
Yep.
Trustee Haynes?
I move to approve the attached resolution and a public, and a public sanitary sewer easement to the city of Arlington for Anderson Elementary School.
Thank you, Trustee Haynes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Mike. We'll now move to vote. Vice President McMurro, can we have your vote verbally, please?
I vote yes.
All in favor, six in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes. That concludes our action items tonight. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull an item for discussion tonight? I see nothing that needs to be pulled. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda for tonight? Dr. Smith?
Trustees, I did want you to note that we have taken a look at a couple of conflicts on this board calendar for next year for your consideration. We do have a couple of conflict in October with a Jewish holiday and also with a conference that sometimes board members attend, Masba, and wanted to make sure that you knew that. We can bring this back to you if you would like us to alter this for the future, but wanted to make you aware of those conflicts that we did find. We also found one other conflict in the spring semester with another holiday.
If we want to bring that back up later, what would be the best way to do that?
You could table this, this item on your consent agenda and just say, we want to remove that item on the consent agenda, and we can bring it back to you with a different proposal if you'd like, or you could take action on the, what is proposed to you this evening.
Can we, we can amend it later, correct?
We absolutely can amend it later. You can go ahead and approve item C as the consider approval of the board trustee meeting calendar, and we can amend it later if the board chooses.
Trustees, do we have any discussion? Any thoughts about Dr. Smith's suggestion or not?
I move approval of the consent agenda as, as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Trustee Fowler, second. We could all vote. Vice President McMurro, we will take yours verbally.
I vote yes.
All in favor, the motion does pass. Six in favor, zero opposed.
Trustees, we will consider any additional moves that we can make, and we can bring that back for your future consideration. I appreciate you passing the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. Up next is our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Crossno, do we have any requesters registered to address the board tonight regarding our non-agenda items?
Secretary Richardson, we do have one.
Thank you. Would you please make our introduction?
Thank you, Secretary Richardson. We have Ms. Armadina Guerrero here.
Thank you. Mrs. Herrera, thank you. Say that again?
Gera.
Gera.
That's fine.
Thank you. This is a routine part of tonight's agenda for our regularly scheduled meeting. This segment of the meeting is to provide our citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on, with items that are not on our agenda. If it is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, the trustees will not be able to reply to you. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for an open forum. You will have three minutes to speak. When Ms. Crossno notifies you that your time is up, please end your presentation. If you have any documents that you would like us to review, you can hand them over to our chief operations officer, Dr. Michael Hill. Are you ready?
When you say personnel matters, so if, like an incident that might have happened?
We don't want you naming any personnel by name-
Oh, no. I'm not going to do that.
-in an open forum, but otherwise.
Okay. Just, that's why I ask. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me know when.
You may go.
Okay. So I'm not sure if any one of you are aware that my son just recently experienced eight incidents towards him within a one-hour timeframe during recess on 4/29/25 this past Tuesday. As I understand it, the student that violated my son has yet to receive consequences because the school principal is still waiting for guidance from the district staff appointed to deal in these type matters. For starters, what I'm asking for here is for at least the student to take responsibility for what he did to my son and wholeheartedly apologize to my son as soon as possible. Plus, for my son to perceive the apology as anything other than sincere will be a reflection that he does not understand what he did was very harmful. As far as any other consequences, I'm going to trust the recommendation will fit the violation or be escalated if this student has had a pattern of misbehavior. Again, for starters, to protect my son's dignity and mental state, I ask that the student apologize as soon as possible. Please pass this on to the, the district staff person that is, I guess, supposed to give guidance to the school principal because that's what she told me. She's waiting for some kind of guidance, but at least an apology or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gera. We will have somebody from the district follow up with you tomorrow. Thank you so much for coming and speaking, and thank you for exercising your right to come and contact the board. Dr. Smith, it is now time for your superintendent's report, if you would give that and submit it.
Trustees, I, I, I need to start in a little different tone than normal. I want to get to the celebrations, but I would like to end on the celebrations this evening. And I think it's important for us to have a quick discussion right now. As you know, on your priorities that have been outlined here, resources, maximizing resources to promote a thriving district while maintaining sound fiscal management, was the way you articulated how you want us to use our resources moving forward. I do need to very publicly share with you all, I am concerned at the lack of action in our legislature on a school funding bill at this point. It's important for our trustees and our public to know that House Bill Two was passed, but House Bill Two just means it was moved out of the House, that no official action from the Senate and the governor has been signed. And so there is therefore no new funding for public schools in the state of Texas right now. We are in a challenging situation, and everyone knows that. Even with the proposed House Bill Two, should it be passed, we know that we still don't have the money that was needed to make up the inflationary gap that we, we encountered from 2019 until today. Despite the actions of the House, we will still end up short on some things and are still going to have to make some tough decisions should the House bill get passed, as was presented in the House. As of right now, we have no indication that even House Bill Two will be passed. And so when we talk about the way we use our resources and ensuring that we're using them to create a thriving district while we ensure sound fiscal management, I need to very publicly share with you all, it's, it's probably time for me as a superintendent to start working with some of our partners. Do you talk about cost-cutting measures that we are going to have to enact with partners in our community so that we can do our best to plan for a budget for the future? These are going to be tough conversations for the board, for our community, and for our partners to consider. And again, not knowing because of the inaction of the legislature puts us in a really challenging situation. But the end of our fiscal year is the end of June, and our board has a duty to adopt a budget in June this year for the upcoming fiscal year. We are going to do our best to try and monitor the legislature and their action and hopeful action coming forward. But we are also going to have to begin conversations to start some pretty significant cost-cutting measures in the future, should that, that bill not be passed or any bill not be passed. I do want to thank our board in our future, or our, not future, excuse me, our past administrators for the position you put us in financially. As you know, many other districts are in the spot where they have to cut right now. Because of your sound fiscal stewardship, in over a number of years, Arlington ISD has the ability to work through this for this year, especially in a very tenuous and uncertain legislative session that we have in front of us. But the fact is, even if the bill, House Bill Two is passed as presented, we are still going to have to begin cost-saving measures in Arlington ISD. And I wanted to make sure I shared that with you as trustees. Part of my job is to make sure I deliver good news to you, but also some of the challenging news. And we are now at, at a pretty critical time for our district as we continue to move forward, and I wanted to make you aware, those discussions will begin soon.
Dr. Smith, a clarifying question based on what you just said. When you were talking about us adopting a budget in June, that is without us having the numbers that we need, that is without knowing exactly what is going to happen and progress throughout the next year. But we are going to adopt that budget and work towards it. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes. In June, we have the obligation to adopt a budget for the upcoming school year, and so we will have a budget presented to you all. Obviously, it would be much more helpful to school districts to actually know what those numbers would be. And we're not in that point right now. So we have to plan as if we're not getting any additional money, and we're continuing to work through that. That is going to be painful for our school district, not as painful as other districts right now, just to be, to be blunt. But that doesn't mean that we are not going to have some really difficult decisions to make in the coming year should a school finance bill not be passed.
I know in the past, at least for the two years I've been on the board and for a while, I've watched board meetings, that we have adopted deficit budgets, but then we have not realized those numbers. We have actually not, at the end of this school year, actualized a deficit budget. Are we expecting that same type of progress again?
Without the action of the legislature, I don't believe we can continue that. And I believe that it's going to, we are going to begin to realize a drain on our fund balance because of these things. As you all know from our presentation last month, and that's part of the reason we had our financial advisor present some of that information to you, the stability of our fund balance is important for a host of reasons moving forward for our school district. So it could very well be that for the, for the first year here, we, we may very well have to adopt a deficit budget and realize that deficit for the 25-26 year if the legislature does not take action. And that doesn't mean, that does not mean that we have not taken action this year. Where our team has been hard at work, thanks to Ms. Moss and key district leaders in our school district that have worked extremely hard to balance a deficit budget that we had for this year. But to point out, we were already doing that. And again, with a lack of action from our legislature, we, we are going to be put in a, in a much worse situation for the coming years, and I need our board to know and understand those difficult decisions. Some will be administrative decisions, but some will be board decisions as well. I hope that we don't have to present them to you for the future, but there is a possibility that may happen.
Thank you.
And if you're okay now, I'd like to get to the, the celebrations, if that's okay. Part of my job as a superintendent also is to make sure that we have the ability to talk about some of the amazing things happening. And if I could find my paper, I would be able to do that. I do not speak German. I don't know if you do. I heard Ms. Fowler might, just a little bit, based on what I heard the other day. But we have a bunch of high school students in Arlington ISD that do, including nine from Martin High School who recently traveled to Texas State in San Marcos to compete in the Texas State German Contest against hundreds of other students from across the state. Overall, Martin placed fourth, and several students won their categories, like Senior Maya Schaefer, who, whose oral presentation won the top prize. Congrats to these students and their teacher, teacher, Andrea Bonner. You might have heard about Corey Academy Destination Imagination Team that went all the way to the world finals last year? Well, the DI Vucados are back at it this year. The six fifth-grade girls won first place at regionals and then first place in all of Texas for their scientific project that includes a skit they developed about an expo planet called 51 Pegasus B. I had to practice that a few times, just so you all know. Now, the girls are headed to the global finals in Kansas City next month, where they will compete with teams from around the world. We wish them luck. We don't always give cafeteria lunch menu updates in my superintendent's report, but this is a big one because everybody loves pizza. Our food and nutrition services team introduced Smart Mouth Pizza at four of our schools recently. It's been a big hit. The restaurant-style pizza is both good and healthy, and will roll it out to all of our secondary schools early next year. I'm grateful for how dedicated David Lewis and his team are to giving our students food they'll enjoy, want to eat, and also is healthy. I don't know if you've heard of Libby DeKine yet, but you will if you have not. The high-achieving sophomore at Arlington High has been elected to service the National Treasurer of the National Society of the Children of the American Revolution for the 25-26 term. Libby has been involved in the organization for a decade and has led service initiatives, promoted historical education, and encouraged youth engagement in civic life. Congrats to Libby. I also want to note that we had a pretty phenomenal Cooking Educational Center's Field Day this month. You can see from the photos, the pre-K3 students had a great time with games, bubbles, the parachute, and the petting zoo. And then finally, as I conclude this evening, you know that this is the busy time of the year. We have incredible things happening inside our classroom and out as we quickly approach the last day of school. And I need to note that today, May 1st, is school principals' day. I believe wholeheartedly that the role of a principal is extremely important in the life of our students and in our schools. I want to say a big thank you to all of our amazing campus principals for their hard work and dedication. We appreciate you. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Trustees, do we have any other reports at this time? Trustee Haynes?
Yeah, sure. I'm rarely first. I have no pictures, just some words. So I wanted to congratulate all of our students. I'm seeing lots of posts on social media and through various school websites and emails, all our students that are competing at the state level and whatever their, their thing is, fine arts, athletics. Specifically, I want to give a shout out to Matthew Lewis, a golfer from Lamar High School. He is our lone Arlington ISD golfer competing in state. He will be, he will compete down in Austin on Monday and Tuesday. So hopefully, next time we meet, I will have a recap of how he did. But I'm excited. We haven't had a golfer go to state in, in quite some time, so it's a pretty big deal to have him there. I also, just real quick, wanted to say a few things as we head into prom season. I know that, well, I'm not naive enough to think that any students are watching this, but if you are, please listen. If parents are, if teachers are, please just pass on to your students to remember to enjoy themselves, have fun, but please make good choices and be safe. I want to thank our high schools that are putting on safe after-prom parties. I know the amount of work that goes into that, but providing them a safe space to celebrate this time in their lives is extremely important. And so I just want to make sure that we are all doing what we can to promote smart decisions during prom season.
Thank you, Trustee Haynes. Trustee Will Banks?
Thank you, Secretary Richardson. I do want to do a shout out to a school that's near and dear to my heart, and Principal Kelly Smith. We're celebrating the 50th anniversary of Shackelford Junior High. They did a tremendous job last night. I was blown away by the theater department, the orchestra, the choir, and there were a lot of great names from the past, like Kelly's own father, who was an AP at Shackelford. And then Kelly, her first job was an AP at Shackelford and got to share the exact same office her father did all those years ago. Also, a shout out to Royce Hillman, who was one of the first principals at Shaq and happens to be the stepfather of my best friend. So there's a lot of Shaq connections there. And it was great to see the community come out and the 70, the, the time capsule from 1975 and see that my street was, I didn't know my street existed in 1975, but it did according to the map. And see all the great photos from the time my daughter went to school there and in the aughts. So congratulations Shackelford Junior High on your 50th anniversary.
One of the things I loved last night is some of the items from 1975, 2000, which is crazy to think, 2000 was 25 years ago, y'all. That is not five or 10 years...
Don't make me feel...
But 25 years ago. But I like seeing that now they're going to put a Stanley in there, Taylor Swift, Mean Girls, an Apple phone, chargers, and of course, our World Series famous Texas Rangers. Does anybody else going down the list? Trustee Mike?
So this... It's not in my usual spot. This past, I believe, Monday took a tour of Morton Elementary, met with Principal Leigh Adams, and she showed us the great and wonderful things at her campus, the great things that they are doing for the students and seeing them learn and be beneficial to what the teachers are showing. But also, Principal Adams earned her doctorate. Which, you know, was amazing in and of itself. But you can see that she has put together a very good staff that enjoys doing what they do and that is teaching our children of the future. You got anything else to add?
I think about that very first classroom, that middle picture that we were at, that we went to, that those were pre-K students. And by what they were learning and the way they spoke, we thought they were kindergarten or first graders. They were so well-spoken, clearly explained what they were doing, but also what they were learning. And it just was a good reminder of what our free pre-K does, is that these kids were getting such a jump on their education. Of course, I was a sucker, trustee Haynes, because they were raising baby chicks. They did not let me put one in my purse or my pocket to go home, but the kids were getting to do so much great things and just seeing how they're going to be prepared for kindergarten and first grade. There is nothing like free pre-K in Arlington ISD. Thank you. Trustee Mike, anyone else? Okay. I'm going to jump in for a second. Superintendent Smith, I know that, Dr. Smith, you talked about you had run over to an art show earlier. This art show was super special to me, you guys. The handsome dude in the black and gold jacket is my youngest. He was able to go and be one of the speakers for Corey Elementary. What this art show does is that all the schools in the district collaborate together as a campus to design something, and they have speakers who go and explain to the people there at Cowboy Stadium of why they created it and why it represents their city. So it was a special honor for him. For me, we're trustees, but we're also parents, and missing your youngest kid getting to do something like that is really hard. And I don't know if people always understand that we skip our own children's very special events to be here, because we know when we are elected, we are no longer representing just our kids, but it's for all the kids in the district. So for hard nights like this, I just want to tell him thank you and how proud I am of him. This week, we were all invited to read at Little Elementary. I was excited because I got to read to Mrs. Baker's second-grade class, but the great part was Mrs. Genice was able to be there. She wrote a book called Harper's Big Test. Her and her teenage daughters have written a series of books that tackle hard subjects for kids and gives them an easy way to process it. What I loved was after she got done reading, though, she took all of their questions, and the questions were thoughtful. For example, how do you come up with an idea? And what if your idea, your girls don't like it? What if your teenagers say, "No, Mom, that's not good"? How are you inspired? How do you get somebody to help you publish a book? And where do you live? You know, basic questions they wanted to know. But they were such a great audience. So many other trustees were there. We had council members there. It was a really great day to be at Little Elementary. We also had National Transportation Day last week. Dr. Hill and I were able to celebrate our bus drivers and transportation staff. We took over 25 dozens of donuts to go tell them thank you and how much we appreciate all that they do. They were so appreciative, you guys. I mean, to see a glazed donut put a smile on their face, that really shows that that's what they want. They just want a little recognition, and a thank you goes a really long way. We were able to tell them, "Thank you for being the first face that many of our students see, but also the last smile that a lot of them see." So we are so thankful for our transportation department and all that they do. Oh, there they are. Look at their smiling faces. They were amazing. So thank you to all of them and for all that they do every day, and we are going to be excited soon to see the new transportation center that they will be receiving as part of our 2019 Bond Project, and excited for them and their new facilities coming their way.
Do we have any other reports for the night? Okay. Seeing none, all items on tonight's agenda have been addressed, and we have no matters to discuss and close session. There being no business, this meeting is adjourned earlier than President Chapa has ever done it, at 9:16 PM.